Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for February 7th, 2022. If you would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. God, we continue to give you praise and glory, God, for your many blessings. We continue to ask your blessings upon our school system, our students and our staff. And then, God, continue to give us direction. These blessings we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is Citizens Address to Board. I have two parents that have signed in. I'll call Ms. Mangram first because yours was the first one on. As you make your way up, I'll just remind you of our rules that please do not name students' names or staff members' names. And we have our three-minute timer on the board, and we ask that you abide to the three minutes, please. All right, thank you.
Well, good evening. How y'all doing today?
Good evening.
My name is LaShonda Mangram, and I would like to address a situation that happened at MCA with one of the coaches. Okay, I don't know if you guys are aware, but my dad was the chaplain of the county for nine years. My dad's name was Pastor Charles Mangram. During this time, my son was grieving, and he still made his way to go to practices, he still participated in games, and you know all that. So, it came a situation on Saturday where he didn't dress out for a basketball game, although he played in JV game, he did not play for varsity, he decided not to dress out. Yes, he was wrong, but he was kicked off the team on Monday, him and some more other students. But I can only speak for mine. I addressed the coach, I addressed the coach, and I addressed the athletic director and the principal. Like I told him, if you had a relationship with your students, if you related to them, if y'all had some type of brotherhood or unity, you would have known that my son was grieving during that time. No coaches, no coach, nor teammate, nobody, or even nobody from the school board came to just show face or show their support to my family during that point in time. He could have made my son run, he could have made him suspend him for a game or two, he just kicked him off. They never gave us no type of sheet saying, okay, this is what I stand by, this is my goals for the season, this is what, you know, just rules and regulations. Nothing of no sort was told to us as a parent. We never had a parent meeting, I've never communicated with this coach at all. So, my thing is, coming from me being a former MCA alumni, what can we do as a community? And what can I do as a parent just to make things better? It's never no type of communication, and if you communicate with somebody, I feel like things will go so much smoother. I'm not the type of person to assume things, or I'm not a Facebook parent. I know that's big in the year 2022, but I'm not a Facebook parent. I like to address things head-on. So, I don't want to be a problem, I want to be a resolution. I want to know what can we do to come together, to make things better. Even with that being said, those kids, they never got basketball shoes ordered, they never got warm-ups. It's like, okay, basketball season is here, let's just play. My thing is, when you go out, you know, we're representing McIntosh County. They should look together, they should look, you know, they look much better than what they did. Also, I spoke even about the cheerleaders. These parents, they spend too much money. A cheerleader is definitely a representation of McIntosh County. Me and myself, being a former cheerleader, I've offered even to help middle school, high school. What can I do to come in and help? I understand that some people, they have in positions that where they dare not, they don't have the awareness of, you know, what it takes to be there, or things that they can implement to these girls' lives. So, I just want to know, what can we do? So, with that being said, I probably didn't get everything I wanted to say out of my three minutes this time, but I will be here next Monday.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mangram.
Okay, Ms. Gillard.
Good evening. All right, now I know three minutes is not enough for me. She said a lot on a nutshell. My son was one of the ones that were kicked off. I am a former alumni of MCA, class of 2000. I was in basketball, track, dance, I was the co-chaplain, I had a scholarship. I also was the president of the Spanish club, my grandparents are from Cuba. It's just a lot of things that I just don't understand as far as communication. My son has been a gifted since he was in the first grade. He's taking college prep courses now. He handles travel basketball as well as other sports. He never asks me for help, I always check on him for help. He's just that committed to what he does and what he loves. For that to happen, there was no communication, there was never a parent meeting at the beginning of any seasons of any sports that my child is a part of, there wasn't. He even had a light concussion for football, took him to the doctor. I was called to the office to speak to the head of the football team. He told me he had a concussion protocol. At the same time, I'm like, okay, you got a concussion protocol, but I never knew that because there was never a meeting, I never received paperwork saying, this is what you expect, this is what we have here in place. So, I took him to his physician, and that's what I'm going to do, I'm a nurse, so I'm going to do that. And I felt like I was reprimanded. I feel like I'm reprimanded for a lot of things. Other parents feel like they're reprimanded, they don't have a voice, they can't say anything. These are kids of the future, we don't know what they can be. We just don't know. I'm fighting for the kids, I don't do Facebook stuff. I come, I'm here, this is my second time being here. My daughter's a graduate of 2019. I had issues when she graduated as well. I just don't understand why I can't communicate. There was never a fundraiser for these boys, for the boys' team, at all. Nothing. I just don't understand it. You could tell me all day how many wins this person has got. The season now, I don't see what's hap- I don't understand. We have great team players. My son know right from wrong. At the same time, he's still a young man, just entered into high school, so he doesn't know how to handle things. But I didn't really know how to handle that situation. He did say that he wasn't going to play, and I just said, okay, are you sure? And he was like, yes, ma'am, I'm not, I'm just going to focus on JV. Because when you play both, they take you out of the first one, couple of quarters, then put you on the superior team for a couple of quarters, but you don't get played for a lot of the games. You could have been focusing on winning for your JV, especially when you're the head point guard. My son has been in the head of the newspaper with the travel basketball team. I know you've seen that in McIntosh County without a Brunswick, but they have won the state in Florida. It's just a lot. I'll continue to comment.
Ma'am, excuse me, let me ask you, when your son had his injury, were you contacted by a trainer?
I was.
Okay, okay. All right.
I was.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I will reach out to both of you, I bet your telephone numbers, and then we can speak, and you can speak as long as we have scheduled for.
Thank you so much.
Give you a little bit more time.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming out.
Thank you both for bringing these things to light.
Thank you.
Yes.
Item number four is approval of our work session agenda. We have our agenda items before us. Could I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
By Mr. Hewlett. All those in favor? Okay, there's no one to oppose. Motion carries five zero. Okay, I'll turn it over to Dr. Poole for these items of information.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off with Goal Area One, Student Success. First off is the Star Student Reception and Recognition. Just as a reminder, Bailey Milton will be recognized, and she has received the highest overall SAT in one city. And so, she's going to be recognized Monday at noon at Spartina, at Spartina. So, I'd hope that if you've not RSVP'd, please do to Shelley so she can get your name in there so we can make sure we're taking care of everything. We're also going to recognize her that same evening, that's a board evening night. That's just a heads up. Second item on here is CCRPI. And just, Superintendent Woods sent out an email of things that he's asked the state board to look at, as well as the federal government. This year is most likely, and I say most likely because nothing's been approved, going to become a baseline year for a lot of information, such as our intercourse tests and our integrated tests, and that there will not be a CCRPI score again this year, is what we're being told. The federal government is still looking at various areas. We still have to post certain scores that come out of these, but this is going to be one more year of not enough information that is fairly assessed in order to provide a CCRPI. I think that's unfortunate because there are a lot of good things going on, and our school system has continued to push forward with making sure that we're giving a good education to our students. Many of the school systems that I've spoken with take the step back and do the woe is us, and we haven't. So, I do think that there's more to come out of the CCRPI in the very near future, once the state and the federal government comes out with it. All right, any questions on that at all? There's one thing that came out of the testing part of that, it had to do with retest, and I would just tell you that Superintendent Woods has said that he didn't think we should retest kids right now. We're going to continue. We think it's important to make sure when they go into those tests that they understand the importance of them, and that they truly have a good grasp of the content that they're doing. And we've got sessions set up for re-engaging our students after they've received their scores and putting them in. Those re-engagements include separate sessions as well as summer school. But I think it's important, we've talked to the principals, everybody's agreeance, we're going to continue to do what we've done and set that thing. Waivers that are typically there. Don't expect a lot of that to take place right now with what's going on. Any questions on items one or two?
Just to remind everybody that Ms. Sheets needs to know as soon as possible if you're going Monday because she has to let me know tonight.
Well, Ms. Sheets, that's good timing, so you're up for number three, Visible Learning Professional Development. I will tell the board again that when I got here, we were not a learning-focused school, we're not an American choice school system as a whole, but we do need to have a standard, and we started off with a standard of using parts of visible learning. And so, Ms. Sheets is going to talk real briefly about professional development.
All right, thank you all for having me. Good evening. If I could describe visible learning and explain it to you in under three minutes, Corwin, who's the company that does visible learning, would probably offer me hundreds of thousands of dollars to come work for them. But I'll do my best. Basically, visible learning is a professional learning, but it's like all-inclusive. So, you may have heard that we do like learning intentions or learning targets, success criteria, things like that. That is a piece of it, and the Georgia Department of Education is really big on John Hattie's work and the work with visible learning. But it includes a lot more than just being clear with students about what they're learning. It's also a whole mindset, that growth mindset, and teaching students what the attributes of a good learner are. Not sitting there and behaving, that's what a lot of people will tell you what good learners are. Good learners are people who embrace mistakes because we learn from them. But it's all about that whole mind shift. So, it is a professional learning, it's going to involve all three schools. The elementary and the middle school will be 100% completely involved because they want to be. And so, they will come here on-site and train us a few days at the beginning of the year, and then again, a few months later, and then again, a few months later. And they do a really good job of doing what's called impact cycles, where they monitor what they're teaching us to do and having us measure whether or not we're doing those things. But in addition to that, it's, I don't know if I've confused you, but it's based on, and this will be the last thing I say because I know we're running short on time, but it's based on a meta-analysis of research, where they take hundreds of thousands of studies on the top learning strategies, and then they compile them to tell what the top strategies are. And not just what they are, but when you use them in your teaching is also important, like when you're introducing a lesson or at the middle or at the end. Anyway, it's really all-inclusive, it's very hard to explain, but we went to visit a visible learning school in Savannah. They got that title because they went through the same thing that we're going through. And in the process of being, like the people coming out to train them, they were evaluated as implementing it well, and so, we got to go visit, and our teachers were blown away. I mean, they've got kids no different than ours, and it was amazing to see what those students could do and really what those teachers were doing. And it's not a lot of big changes, it's just being more purposeful in what we do. I apologize because I know I probably didn't do a very good job of explaining it, it's really, really intricate, but I'm super excited about it, and I think our teachers are too.
And we've had the discussions in the past that our teachers deserve professional development so they can better serve our students. And in the past, past, those funds have been pretty well cut, but we're trying to do our best. We want to make sure, one, that we're overcoming all of the issues that have happened due to COVID, and this is, and as Ms. Sheets has already indicated, a great step forward, and our kids deserve this.
When will this training be, over the summer?
No. Because we, this is the cool thing about it, because we do have a small system. The best thing to me is with the training, whenever trainers come, it's great to redeliver, and we can do that when appropriate, but I think you all know it's better to hear it from the horse's mouth, right? So, what's most exciting to me is we can have all of our teachers trained. Because we're such a small system, all of our teachers can be trained at the same time. And so, it'll be the first two days of pre-planning, then we have a date in October and a date in March.
So, it's not pulling the teachers out of class for training?
That was my question.
No.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, that was a really long-winded answer for that question, but no, teachers will not be out of their classrooms during their professional learning day.
And that's been one of the things that I've continued to ask, is I want to make sure we truly minimize teachers being in the classroom for training because we can take advantage of it. There are some slight changes that we want to do to the next year's calendar that accommodates that, but literally, it's moving one day from here to there so that we can get this done.
Yeah, it just seemed like we'd gotten the habit years ago, we'd have a lot of teachers gone out of the classroom, and that was a reason for my question.
We are all in agreeance on that.
Y'all have any other questions?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Finish is Goal Area One, Student Success. Goal Area Two is Organizational Effectiveness, and, you know, I believe I may have spoken with all of you. If I have not, I apologize, but, you know, we're in a unique situation right now where we have to move some money from one bank to another in order for it to be pledged against appropriately. So, I have spoken to probably more banks over the last two weeks than I care to, talking about the specifics of it. But we have the money in our accounts, and we're looking to move approximately $2.5 to $2.6 million into different accounts. One of the accounts that we need to look to is called a Georgia Fund One account. It's basically a multi-billion dollar account that the state manages, and they give a pretty decent return on it, but there's no local representation. So, it's a little, we're a little concerned about, you know, just being able to easily say, I need $100,000 and move it now. But in the long term, our EastBloss money can go in that and continue to earn more interest, and we can plan ahead in order to move that. So, the request is to review moving approximately six, I say approximately because that number changes a little bit. It's all over $500,000 and approaching $600,000, but not to exceed that, but about $600,000 move out of the EastBloss debt service account into the Georgia Fund One account. That takes care of the issue that our local banks are struggling with as far as the overall amount. On top of that, and this is all kind of tied together, but, you know, we need to move a million dollars out of general operating and to the local projects account so that we can pay for our kitchen project. You'll see the numbers here in just a little while when Tammy goes through to see what we're talking about. And then, the last one that's on here is to move $2 million into a money market account from the general account again. So, the total amount that's moving out of Southeastern would end up being $2,600,000 total that we're asking to do. And again, Georgia Fund One would be the 600, and the money market account in another institution would be the 2 million.
So, I'm sure we're not the only school system in the state of Georgia with this problem.
It's not even just Georgia, it's Florida as well, so.
It's a good problem.
It's an interesting problem.
It's an interesting problem.
Well, and just to clarify, this is not something that we came up with, this is something that was approached.
That's right. And again, you know, it especially impacts those school systems that are, I mean, we manage a relatively low budget, but with the influx of the federal money that's coming in, the local banks are feeling the pinch of what do they have to do? Because they have to pledge against it, and so, pledging against it is, I believe, and Mr. Braun tell me if I'm wrong, 110%.
That's correct.
So, if you have $7 million, you do the math, I mean, you need to put $7.7 million in there against it to say you have that much. This kind of alleviates that, but also keeps our money in a safe place and in interest. All right? All right, so that takes care of items one, two, and three. I'd like to talk real quick about item four, and if you haven't seen it in the news, it's coming. The state legislature is looking very hard at how to handle the potential for students having access to obscene material in the media centers, in the classrooms, and I think it was Forsyth that just removed 10 items out of their media centers. There are, all over the country, people moving various pieces of supposed literature into, you know, not allowed categories. We have done a review of ours, we had a notice from the state legislators that they were toying with various versions of this new law. Well, one of the versions specifically says that if a teacher or media center or principal allows it, knowingly allows for the scene of it, that it could become a criminal offense. So, that's still potentially out there right now. There are two, three different bills that are being considered, and we gathered our media specialists together, started looking at, you know, what types of literature we have in our actual buildings, as well as what they may have access on the internet, and that's even more concerning because the internet, kids are smart. Boy, they figure out a way to get into it and see it, and, you know, we have filters that are in place, but again, that a lot of this becomes more so a parent issue as well because once they have it, it might be a home, they might be, you know, accessing this information. One of the latest recommendations from one of the legislators was that if a board, the board has to have some policy or procedures in place to accept material. And the second would be if a parent complains about it, to have a review procedure. And then, if the board discerns that the material is appropriate, it was to take a picture of this part that was being objected to and to post it online and say why we agree that that should be in our schools. Well, the problem with that is that that might very well be taken out of context. It might be one cuss word that in a 600-page book, whether it's appropriate or not, but it might very well be a minimal portion of the overall content. But we would have to explain why we allowed that word to be seen. So, I don't know if that's going to fly, but we're all looking. We do have a draft, and I'll call it a draft regulation at this point that I put in your packets. Not a policy, even though it says policy, but it'll be a regulation right now because we know the state is going to come out and establish, and we believe they will, a law that's going to govern what we must do. So, a lot of issues that are coming from this, a lot. And as we've talked about, it's, you know, we don't want to be the censors of literature, but we do know that if there are items out there that are not appropriate based on norms of this community, that we need to take appropriate actions.
Well, I think from our training last week, we heard this from Ms. Angela Palm, and she addressed this about the different materials that different systems are fighting to try to keep out of the school system. And I think the sad thing about it is we got people, and I'm not going to call them names, but we got people that think that because they want their rights, they can choose what we can put in these school systems. And I think that's what we got to stand up and fight against. And it has to go back to our governors and back to, you know, those folks that are in leadership position that helped to make those policies and send that stuff back down to our school system. So, we need to talk to these people and let them know that's not what we want.
Well, we're going to see some issues come up very soon. I think the legislature might close somewhere around the first week of April. I expect that they will have a law published by then, and then we'll know the true impact. And I know one of the things they're going to dictate is that the state board would give us an ideal policy of what to implement. So, we do have, and I said as well, you've got a copy of it, procedures for review of material that's going to be in place. And if a parent does complain, or any stakeholder does complain, we'll go through those protocols. And we'll determine whether or not we think it's appropriate. And I think that's more important than saying, oh, my gosh, I'm going to pull it. Because there are some pieces of literature that somebody may not like, but again, there are others that we might be able to justify the instructional and appropriate reason for those materials to be presented. Wide-open issue. Any questions at all about item four? All right, if you will pull up Review Calendar School Year '22. Hey, Mr. Mouse, will you talk real quick about what the suggested change was here?
The 2020, '22, '23 school year was approved last year by the Board of Education, but we decided to tweak it in order to improve the impact reviews for visual learning. So, you'll see that we moved a date in October to the 17th. It's one day for the teachers to come back, the students will still be off, and then you'll see another day in March. They fall perfectly in the cycle of the professional development for visual learning that that happens to be right around the time when the next stage of the rollout comes out. So, this helped keep the teachers in the classroom, keep our visual learning plan going full throttle.
All right, will you go over the next ones for us, please?
Yes, sir. We have now put out for a survey for the 2023-24 calendar, two options. Option one is a calendar that has no, none of the breaks. It's just a straight calendar that goes right through the year with very, very little breaks in between there. You can see there's a lot of green, not much yellow. And then, we have the 2023-24 Option Two that models the same calendar that we have this year with a fall, a break, this spring break, and Christmas break in there. We surveyed the teachers, parents, and all staff, and overwhelmingly, the staff has chosen Option Two. With those breaks, we heard reports from the high school and the middle school that the breaks really did a good job with giving a little relief, and attendance and discipline was better after the breaks than that straight going through. Option Two was overwhelmingly chosen by the staff and.
Do you believe that the surveys have been out there long enough to get valid input?
They've been out there approximately two weeks, almost two weeks.
And I think you had around 100 responses?
On the website, and I believe we got, all of our staff had the opportunity to have seen it, had the opportunity to vote on it. And I believe approximately, I don't have that right.
It's okay.
But we have plenty of parent communication from each school.
All right, again, these are the proposals that are there presently. We don't have to vote on those this evening. Madam Chair, I did ask if we get to the part where we could vote on the transfer of the money so that we can resolve that issue, and I apologize.
Okay. Do we want to go back and do that?
Yeah, if I could ask the board to consider motions to approve items one, two, and three based on our discussions so that we can move forward with that.
Under Goal Area Two.
Under Goal Area Two.
Okay, so we'll do one first, and this is the review of the transfer of approximately $600,000 in EastBloss Debt Services account to the Georgia Fund One account. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Straggles, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, no one to oppose. Okay, the motion carries five zero. Item two, Superintendent recommends a transfer of $1 million from general operating account to a local projects account. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Okay, with no one to oppose, motion carries five zero. Number three, review, excuse me, Superintendent recommends a transfer of $2 million from general operating account to money market account. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Straggles. Any further discussion?
No.
That's fine. All those in favor? Okay, and no one to oppose, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
To pick back up where we're at, item six, a discussion of minutes from previous meetings. Again, if you'll take a look at those over the week, if you have any issues with them, something we may have left off or something needs to be changed, if you let Ms. Lane know or myself, then we'll make those changes and we'll ask for approval of those changes at the next business meeting. Ms. Franklin, can you discuss our January twenty-two financial report, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Page one, general operating accounts, January thirty-first balance. We began the month with 2.29 million. We have receipts of over, just over 5 million. And we have dispersments of 1.4 million, leaving us a balance in the general operating account of 5.9 million. And that is the account that we believe Clint's holding most. Page twenty-four, general fund revenues, with the school year of 58.3%. We've had general, we have received general fund revenues, period to date, of just over 10 million, which puts us at 69% of the budgeted 14.6 million in general fund revenues. Page twenty-six, expenditures, we've had period-to-date expenditures of 6.79 million, which puts us at 45.78% of our budgeted 14.8 million in general fund expenditures. And finally, fund balance, the general fund, and the fund balance for January thirty-first is 5.69 million. School nutrition account has a balance of $125,398. The local projects account, we have a balance of just over a million dollars. At the debt service account, we had $150,390 for January East Bloss receipts. And we currently have a balance in that account of $570,491. That is the balance we will be transferring to the Georgia One Funds.
Thank you.
And future East Bloss receipts should go directly into the Georgia One Funds. And that's all I have, other than any questions, other than that.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Mr. Maso, if you will join us and talk about facilities, please?
Great evening, Board. It's a pleasure to come before you tonight, talk about a few of these agenda items. First, start off with Adams Street. The Adams Street project was, started off with the removal of, removal of the trees and from the middle of that, if you can see on this overhead, that the Adams Street triangle there is where we just had all the trees removed and flattened out and ready for the next big move on that. We are talking about having it surveyed. The survey will be out this week, surveying the land, to see exactly where our right-of-way is and what actually is our property and what's the city, so that we can look into closing down Adams Street on each side and possibly making that a safe passage during the day. Possibly not closing it down all the time, but during the day when kids are out there, definitely. And then a possible fencing around that, for it to be an area that could be used by the city, by our kids during the day, with no fear of the road there. And so, it's very appropriate to fence that off and get all the dimensions and look at how we can improve the flow of traffic in that area. Ms. Ruth, you'll take the next one. This one's a little aerial view of moving in, just a few seconds, you can see. At the very end of this, it's about twenty seconds, I'd like you just to notice how beautiful our coast is. You're, you're gonna see the drone pull up and how close the middle school is to the natural beauty that we have here in Darien. It's right there, so it's a beautiful shot. Moving on to the multi-purpose room floor upgrade, we have approximately 4,630 square feet of indoor space that is heated and air-conditioned, a real gem for a system. This area is right behind the gymnasium at the high school, there's a whole room in there. And typically, it's been used just for our weight, our wrestling team. However, being a small system, we have to make sure that it is a truly multi-purpose room. So, we're gonna do some upgrades on the floor. It used to be the weight room at one time before the weight room was built there. And in that process, they, there was nothing on the floor at the time. All the weights crashed down and clinked down and divvied up the floor pretty good. And so, for repair of that and make that room something that we can use all year long and make it a true multi-purpose room. Any questions on that?
Who's gonna be using this room? Cause if you.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah, well, it'll be truly all year round that it'll be able to be used. The flooring that we're gonna put in there is gonna be sound dampening. The sound in there is, is pretty echoey. I see the band using it on a hot summer day. I can see a lot of our sports using it, and as well as the day, during the day, our students using it as a great facility indoor to keep us moving. You know, in the middle of July in the summer, it can be pretty hot and the weather could be pretty bad. And this area would give us an indoor space to really be able to.
Every sport can use it and it's a.
With the cost forthcoming on this?
It's probably, I think, about 5,000, if I remember right, to do the, to bring the floor up, to level it because of all the dents. And then the turf itself that's gonna be in there is probably, I think, anywhere from fifteen to twenty. That'll go in there to carpet and fill the whole thing in.
Again, this would make this room truly multi-purpose all year long. All, all of our school can use it, and it won't affect the wrestling team at all. The wrestling mats will go right on there. They'll still have their beautiful space, but throughout the year, the other clubs and sports will be able to use it. All right, moving on. The middle school kitchen project, really excited about where we are in this project. We are very close to beginning. There's only a few last-minute details that we're hammering out regarding whether we use gas or electric for certain parts of the building. We have gas AC units that are up there now, and it might behoove us and be financially sound to put a gas AC unit that is, removes the exhaust and everything from that kitchen and a couple other equipment. They're just doing a survey, a study on what is the very best. Few more details, and we hope to be starting on that project here very soon. Again, hoping to start off next school year in the building.
Have we ever given any thought, and I don't know if other schools do this, maybe putting a generator there in case we would lose power, like with hurricanes or?
You're talking about the new kitchen?
The kitchen, that we don't lose our food. Cause you never know when you might have to feed the community or.
Yeah. Let me get an estimate.
Just a thought.
Let me get an estimate of what, I mean, we have one now for this building to keep the servers up. I'll figure out what the cost was for that. I think generally speaking, for a low voltage of about 100 amps, I think it's somewhere around 5,000 a generator, I don't know what those refrigerating units would charge. And then the question becomes if, if we're operating off electric, is how much electric that would require? But I'll get, we can get that together.
On a side note, that all of our coolers are alarmed, and we get in a temperature alert. If it were ever to drop below, we would be notified and we would be able to move it to another freezer that was working, within plenty of time before any defrosting, just a little security there. But a generator's a great idea.
Right.
Yeah, before you get to the schools.
Yeah.
That's right. Timber project.
Now, let's go back, item, the Todd Graham one, did we talk about that?
Yes, air conditioning at Todd Graham. As you know, that we've been battling a very hot and cold cafeteria where they, not for the students, but where the employees work in the kitchen, due to, we're not sure. So, instead of spending $78,000 right off the bat for a new AC unit that, and exhaust, we're gonna do a study of this one. We have a company coming in tomorrow or Wednesday to actually put their hands on it, watch it for three days, and see exactly what the AC is doing, so that we can have the most information and make a move that is based on facts, rather than just saying, "Hey, it's broken. We don't know, let's replace it." Let's get in there and see exactly what's going on with that. So, that's in the works and.
I mean, the original estimate was 70 or 80,000 dollars.
Yeah.
And, I mean, and, but, I will say this, and if you walk into that kitchen during the start of school for a good four months, it's, it's unbearable. It is, it is bad. And we have employees that are working there, we have to do something, but we need to, we need to figure out what's causing it.
So, it's been like this the whole time and nobody's said anything, or did they report it? I mean.
One of the things, I can't.
I mean, if I was working in those conditions, you would hear me yelling.
Yeah, well, they have complained, they have complained about it since I've been here.
Okay, so they have, okay.
So, we're trying to figure out, but to spend the 80,000 versus, it might very well be, the question is whether or not the vent is causing it, or if maybe the outside in the actual kitchen area vents aren't working. And we don't know which one's which. But the way those things are designed, the air comes down and basically, when the vent turns on, it immediately sucks it back up. And that's the intent, is to try to keep that air at a, at a temperature that it doesn't impact on the, on the people working. Well, if we put an air conditioner in there, then we're literally paying for cooled air to just immediately be sucked right back on out, and that was a cost of 70,000.
They're in the wrong place. Those air vents are in the wrong place.
Well, the air vents come with the vent, that's, that's the way it's designed. But that vent in that kitchen is, it's huge. It dominates that kitchen area. So, we have to decide, you know, is it something that maybe there needs additional ones on the outside so that the workers aren't feeling that? So, that's why this guy's coming to take a look at it and to see whether or not there's something that, that's been done wrong.
I think we're making a really good move by knowing before we make an investment of that, that purchase, that large. The timber project, the timber project has been, in my opinion, a great success. You'll see this first picture here is the block of timber that was cut and replanted right behind the baseball field. There was approximately 11,200 trees between the two plots. Ms. Ruth, if you'll go to the next shot. This is the second plot that is planted. This is from the interstate. And you'll see that it pans up. This is a 10-acre block. And again, seven, 11,200 trees. They're approximately planted at five foot and then 10 foot between each row. That'll give us an opportunity to thin out when time comes right and have a great, a great stand. But you can see, I just wanna note that that footed, that roadside frontage right there is a possibility that we can be looking at some advertisement in the future. Baseball field and track, Russ, if you'll play that. Our baseball facility, I think, is amazing. We have a, a great facility, as you can see. If you'll notice the black vinyl around the back of the fence, that is all the way complete. We will have the black vinyl going down, all the way down the first base and third base line. In the back, you'll, you'll notice that it's not there yet, but there'll be a, right there, if you see the three, the four poles and the pole that, the white pole, that's the flag pole. That's gonna be a, a vision to help the kids see distance. It's a, it really helps them be able to gauge how far things are. It's a big, it'll come up black there, too. All the dugouts have been painted, the batter's box or the pitching box has been redone for all the pitching mounds for the warm-up. And even the press box, you'll see that we've got a new building underneath that, new doors, new gates. We've put a lot into the baseball program to see that we have the best facility possible. So, I'm really excited about that. All right, transportation lot cleanup. You know that we have a lot that's right behind the transportation. As you can see, there are those line of buses behind the transportation stop. That lot that is behind it was used to store the debris that was taken out from Todd Graham. When they did place all the debris there, there was huge boulders of concrete and rebarb and all the stuff you'd get from a demolition. Well, they did come in and move out and recycle a lot of it. However, they had left big parts of concrete and rebar that were in there. Our maintenance department worked diligently trying to mow it back, mow it back. But they got to a point that our mowers, we wouldn't put in there because it would've just slapped up against big pieces of concrete and metal. So, we just had that cleared. We had a gentleman come in who did our planting. He used his chipper machine, chipped it up, then took a bobcat in there, got all the big pieces, and now it is mowable. From the very front to the back, we could take a bush hog and not have any fear of hitting anything. All the rebar and all the concrete's been taken out. If you look at the very back of that lot, to the, to the back of it, that right there is a plan for a possible pole barn, so that we can store all the things that we need to store from the demolition of Oak Grove and just some storage for us to have that. It's covered storage, so critical.
The buses, actually, as well, the bus drivers were complaining that the way that yard was, they were not able to walk around their buses, and so cleaning that up is, it was greatly needed.
Yeah, we were thinking about some crush and run behind the buses and, and adding two or, two or three more rows of parking where you can really space out. Russ, if you'll play the next video, I'm just gonna show you that. Look here, if you'll notice, there's a bus actually backing up right now while I'm taking this video. That's a tight backup. We have one of our best drivers, Mr. Kern, who's our mechanic, he's able to slip it in there, but we don't need to be that tight, as you can see that it behooves us to be able to have another couple rows and spread that out. A real tight fit there. All right, and our last goal area or last objective here is Oak Grove tree removal. On the side of Oak Grove, not the 99 side, but the other side of Oak Grove.
Green Street, Green Street.
Green Street. There are six trees that are needed replacement, or not replacement, I'm sorry, they need to be cut down. The trees are dead, and for safety purposes, we're gonna go ahead and have them removed. If you drive by there, you'll see it's very obvious what trees are, are the ones. It's just time to take care of them before the debris drops on the fence or any area like that, so.
And one of those trees is, it was at one point, obviously, a very beautiful oak, but it was struck by lightning, and you see it all the way up, and it's, it's got a huge limb hanging right over the road.
Do you think we need to maybe reach out to an arborist? Get them to come in and look at these trees to make sure, cause hey, I don't wanna get in a jam with, you know.
That was the first thing.
Historic preservation folks or, you know.
Absolutely. We had the Georgia Department of Forestry gentleman come and evaluate the oak tree, the one that would possibly cause some kind of stir. The other trees are, are dead, 100%, you can tell just by looking at them. And the one that, that might look like, oh, this tree's alive, is a oak tree that is a small one down at the end near the football field. It has holes in the, the top of it, you can see where something is burrowed in. It's just a matter of time before that tree loses the green that it has. But the five trees, when you drive by, no arborist would need to tell you. You'd be able to say, "Oh, that's a, a dead tree." And the one is definitely, needs to be replaced by the, the gentleman who's doing the work for us. And again, the only tree that I had checked by a Georgia Department of Forestry gentleman was the one, the bigger oak tree in the parking lot of the.
Now, if you, if the board wants us to do that, especially with that one tree, and we can do it, we'd end up paying somebody to come out and do it, but it's, it's dead, but I mean, I.
Well, I, you know, and I'm one person, I just want to cover ourselves, you know?
Sure, absolutely.
You know, I mean, it's no harm, I mean, obviously.
I mean, you know, these oak trees, that's the.
They're beautiful.
Beautiful, you know, the beauty of our community, and I just don't wanna chop that thing down and.
Let's see how quickly we can get an arborist out to look at it. It is a liability if it, if the limbs fall, that's one of the reasons we need to move on it.
Any other questions?
All right. Can you give the COVID update? That's the next area on goal area three, culture and climate.
Again, I just want to give, um, our teachers and our staff at the schools a group, a big hand for managing through a difficult situation. But, um, and this is a knock on wood. I hope that we're on the downward slope of this variant. Right now, we have two staff positive, zero staff exposed, six positive students and zero students exposed. So right now there, uh, there was no kids on quarantine, no staff on quarantine and six, eight total cases in the county. We're in a really good spot and I think it's because of, um, obviously, hopefully the downward slope and the hard work that our teachers and staff have been putting into being as diligent as possible with their COVID protocols.
You gotta think about the, the counties around us. Many of them closed immediately, went to virtual, closed this school, that school, and we were able to sustain. So I think our, our teachers did a great job. Administrators doing a great job.
Absolutely. Dr. Paulus, if you'll just allow me one last second to thank the city again for their hard work with the cleanup of that area in front of the middle school. They stepped up to the plate, saved us thousands of dollars. And I'm not saying that figuratively, literally thousands of dollars. We had an estimate that was thousands to remove all that and the city stepped up. Our partnership is strong and we appreciate them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braun.
Thank Mr. Gregelz. He headed it up.
That's right. Yeah.
Uh, we're going to move to, uh, goal area four, quality workforce. Um, you know, I, I've continued since I've been here to receive questions about why do we not pay into social security? And I, I will draw attention. Mr. Russell's here from Valak. Um, I invited him so he could hear the same presentation and tell me if we have any wrong information. Uh, but, you know, McIntosh is one of only a few, uh, counties that our employees do not pay into so, most of our employees do not pay into social security and the system does not match that contribution. So the question is always why and what took place. So I want to show a very quick video. Um, that video is about two and a half minutes long, but it, it's, it explains a little bit about where we're at. And, and I'm giving you both sides, the pros and the cons. This particular one's a pro pay social security, but it does lay out some of the information. So if you can show that, Rusty.
You may know that not all workers in the United States are covered by social security. But did you know one of the largest groups of uncovered workers is teachers? This inequity dates back to the nineteen fifties, before most people lived long into retirement. Back then, fifteen states opted out of providing social security to teachers in the belief that state pension plans would provide a better deal. Of course, in thirty-five states, teachers can rely on a three-legged stool of retirement, personal savings, employer-provided benefits and social security. But take one leg away and you have a very real problem. Teachers without social security coverage are spread all across the country, but they're particularly concentrated in populous states like California, Ohio, and many parts of Texas. All told, there are about one point two million teachers in this situation who aren't covered by social security. Some aren't even aware that they are going to fall through the social security safety net. When teachers start out, they might not know how long they'll remain as teachers. Out of one hundred new teachers, half won't stick around long enough to qualify for any pension at all. Another thirty-five will qualify for a pension, but it will fall well short of providing a reasonable standard of living during retirement. All of these teachers will have spent years working to serve our communities, but will have little or no retirement savings to show for it. That leaves about fifteen teachers out of our original one hundred who do make it the whole way. These teachers might not think they needed social security because their pensions will provide an adequate retirement benefit. But that's the wrong way to look at things. Most teachers don't know when they're just starting out how long they'll teach or whether they'll stay in the same state for their entire career. And retirement shouldn't be a lottery reserved for the fortunate few. In the twenty-first century, with people living longer, everyone should be on a path to a decent retirement, no matter where they live and work. Social security isn't sufficient as a standalone benefit, but it provides a solid base of progressive portable retirement benefits. In too many states, teachers without social security are facing a quiet but very real risk to their retirement security. Instead of wishing the problem away, policymakers must act. State policymakers can extend coverage to teachers in their own states now, or federal policymakers can make sure all teachers nationwide have access. Teachers' futures depend on it.
That's a quick overview, but let's talk some specifics and how it applies to McIntosh. Can you show up that next one? So obviously nineteen thirty-five, almost, uh, what, a hundred years coming close to it, where Social Security Act has been in place. Numerous changes have taken place over the years. Um, specifically though, the original Social Security Act did not include state employees. And so you have employees such as our teachers who were discounted and a lot of that supposedly had to do with it. They, they didn't know whether or not they could in fact tax employees. The federal government at that time was a lot more hands off than they are now. Um, then in the seventies though, the states were asked to enter to a, a section two eighteen agreement. Basically has a change to the Social Security Act, which allowed them to, if they wanted to, what exactly were you going to ask of your state? Are you contributing? Are you not? Um, but it dealt specifically with, with, um, every state and adding to it. Fifteen states said no in some form or another, and Georgia was one of them. So Georgia took it one step and said that they would count on the counties to make a decision. McIntosh opted out. So in doing so, that was a decision made fifty-ish years ago? That we are still experiencing, long time ago. Any questions on the background so far? If you go to the next slide, pros and cons of paying into social security. You saw the, the video that was there, but, you know, as it stands right now, employees, specifically those employees who contribute to T R S, that's what we're talking about. We have ninety-one employees that, that do pay in and the system pays in, but they are non-T R S employees. But those employees right now have a, a salary that is six point two percent higher because they don't have to have that taken out of them. That tax is not taken out of them. As well, the system doesn't pay the matching part of it at six point two percent. So that's a savings to the school system. There are opportunities such as Valak for people to contribute. So, uh, an employee who does not pay into social security because of this has an opportunity to invest. And the other part of this is that there are opportunities out there, whether it's Valak or somebody else, that once they do retire, they can draw a pension of some nature if they're, they start early enough and have enough of the years put in it. Other problems that come from this are very complicated, but I'll try to explain it. But one of them is called the windfall elimination provision. In essence, it, it reduces the potential earnings on social security if somebody has not paid into social security. Um, as well, you know, if, if there are no earnings or no contributions at all, they won't earn anything when they're, when they're getting ready to retire. There's also this government pension offset that further reduces entitlements for spousal benefits, and I'll explain that in just a minute. Social security typically, you don't draw that until you get to at least sixty-two. Okay? All right, next slide. That windfall elimination provision we talked about, and it's a lot of information to go off of. But basically for, for systems who pay into T R S, in, in ours pays into T R S, but we are a non-participant in social security, this windfall elimination provision applies. And what basically it does is this, you take what you would earn for social security if you were to retire at sixty-two, and they calculate, um, three different tiers. The first tier, it is calculated at ninety percent of an average index, which is right now at eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. So they earn ninety percent of the eight hundred and twenty-six. I paid into social security, I'm going to get ninety percent of the eight hundred and twenty-six typically. But a teacher who has not contributed is automatically deducted. There's percentages that go up to forty percent. So a teacher who may have served as an example, twenty years in another school system, paid in, paid twenty years in, but then comes and works in McIntosh for ten, those ten years at five percent discount, five percent discount keeps adding up, up to forty percent total. They're going to see a reduction in their overall social security earnings of three hundred and thirty dollars a month on average. Next slide. That governmental pension offset, and I would tell you, I can understand the windfall because they really want to make sure that you're not making a lot of money off of social security that you didn't pay into it. But this governmental pension offset, it's kind of ugly. And I've given you some information. You can look at it yourself. But basically it takes that same scenario and says that if a, if an employee has a spouse who retires at sixty-two and draws retirement off of social security, and unfortunately may pass away, that if the employee, the school system employee who never contributed tries to earn the entitlements from their spouse, they're not entitled to it. In fact, what's of interest though, is that if a spouse sat at home for thirty years and did not pay into social security, that spouse would be entitled to those earnings. Can't explain it, but that's that governmental pension offset. And I would tell you, the other part of this is that when, when they look at the pension of the employee from T R S, if the pension from the employee of T R S is more than the pension earned from social security for the spouse, they get nothing. If they paid into social security for some of it and it's, and it's slightly lower, they can reduce it as much as two-thirds more down. So any way you look at it, this governmental pension offset is not a pretty thing for, for employees who do not contribute into social security. Next slide, please. Just to give you a scenario of where we're at. If scenario one, if you're in a school system that pays into social security, employee pays in it. If you, just for the case of the argument, an employee earns five thousand dollars a month, excuse me, four thousand a month, stays for thirty years. During that time, they've contributed also six percent into T R S. So they're paying social security, paying into T R S. The social security contributions in this case would be about two hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. The employer contributed two hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. So total contributions going into this employee's account for social security is four hundred and ninety-six dollars a month. A teacher who works thirty years, and let's say they got right out of college, works for thirty years, probably is eligible to retire at age fifty-two, fifty-three. The earliest they can draw social security is sixty-two, which means they're sitting around for ten more years with zero income other than their T R S, waiting for social security kick in. There's good things and bad things, but that's just the way it is. And once they kick sixty-two, then they'll earn the benefits of about almost fourteen hundred dollars a month. Let me give you scenario number two. So this is a McIntosh employee who contributes to Valak or any other institution. Again, same scenario, four thousand a month, retires after thirty years, contributes their six percent to T R S. So they have T R S coming to them. But they also take the six point two percent that they would have paid into social security and they invest it. And they invest it in Valak or some other institution. So that two hundred and forty-eight dollars goes towards that. And over the course of thirty years, typically rate of return continues to, to, to build. So now the difference is that that employee can start drawing that retirement at fifty-two and they're not waiting around for ten more years. They might earn as much as a thousand dollars a month, but that's a thousand dollars a month for ten years versus waiting ten more years to draw thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars just through social security alone. And of course, they're going to continue to get their T R S check. Let me give you the last scenario. No voluntary contributions from employee. They pay in their six percent to T R S, but nothing else. So they reap the benefit of a higher salary, the six point two percent, and they just go about their life until they retire. And then when they retire, if they haven't stacked anything away, they get a T R S check and that's it. And if their spouse happens to draw spousal, excuse me, uh, social security from their retirement and happens to pass away, they're not going to get that either because of that governmental pension offset. That's an ugly piece of this. Next one. Facts. We only have fifty-one employees that contribute to Valak out of two hundred and thirty-three. There could be a change to this. There could be, there is an opportunity. What you, one of the things that, that I've been told for years was that once you're in it, you can't get out. You, you can't get back in it. You're done. That's not factual. That section two eighteen we talked about, our employees who pay into T R S could take a vote. They could do a referendum and they could do one of two different votes. They could say yes or no, I want to contribute into social security. But then every new employee coming in would have to pay, pay into social security automatically. Item two is a full-up vote, fifty-one percent. If fifty-one percent of the employees say yes, then everybody does it no matter what. We could opt in to social security if we wanted to. That also means that the school system pays that six point two percent to everybody. So again, that's an additional expense on our system. The referendum will require proclamation signed up by the governor. There are a lot of procedures, a lot of time takes place. But it could be done if it really was warranted. A lot of information that's, that was just presented. Um, I would tell you that when I got here, I was handed a sheet of paper and the sheet of paper talked about windfall limitation and talked about governmental pension offset. I didn't understand it. I didn't spend any time worried about it. But with only fifty-one employees that are contributing, it, it worries me that maybe our employees don't know enough about the potential to invest otherwise. I would like just to make the recommendation that, um, we need to get out to the, to the schools. We need to talk to every employee and just give them the same presentation we just did. Whether they want to contribute to Valak or another personal decision, could be some other institution that they want to contribute to. I don't know that it's in a position, that we're in a position to start right now paying social security either. Because although we have federal money coming in, that's going to dry up in a couple of years. And we're talking, Tammy, a couple hundred thousand a year?
More than that. About, well, about fifty thousand a month.
Yeah. So a lot of money that it would cost us if we ended up paying back into social security. I, I can't make that recommendation to the board. Um, I do think as well though, that knowing what we've just had, there are a lot of employees that aren't putting that portion towards any type of other investment. And I think that's the biggest thing that's coming here. And I also think that many of our employees don't understand the issue of the windfall or the governmental pension offset, and that is a huge, huge deal. Um, that's a lot of information on social security. I, I hope it answers some of the questions that each of you have been receiving. Um, any questions at all on it?
No, I would just like to say, I, I feel like, and this is just me personally, you know, when I came to work here years ago and you come in your first day of, you know, your orientation day and you've got insurance here, you've got this here, you've got all this here, and you're trying to absorb everything and you don't really know that you missed something because you don't know that you missed it. And I would just, you know, and if we only have fifty-one employees that wish to contribute, that's great. But as long as the others know, you know, because I don't want somebody thirty years, you know, to retirement and, oh my gosh, you mean all this time? There was nothing?
I sat with a retired teacher today at lunch and her only comment was, and she subs for us, she said, I wish I had invested earlier. The money's just not there.
And a lot of younger, you know, twenty-three-year-old teachers, they're not thinking about retirement. But when you lay this out for them, I think, you know, that it would help them better understand that when I get to that point, I'm not going to have.
Mr. Russell, did I miss anything?
You did a good job covering a lot of material really fast.
I appreciate that. There's, there's, it's a complicated subject. Um, anything else from the board? All right. Next area up here, we have talked about this is the, um, payment of retention incentives to employees. One of the things that the federal government, uh, has allowed us to use, that cares money for are, are retention incentives. They're not bonuses, but they're, they're the ability to say, if you stay in your system, then we can pay you. These are trying times. You know, every day our teachers go to work, every day, um, our employees across the board are interfacing with this issue of COVID. And it's been going on for two years and some of the most challenging times that we could ever. and some of the most challenging times that we could ever even expect. And they're expected to be there, wear a mask, not wear a mask, check this, check temperatures, make sure that you get kids caught up because they've been out for ten days, fifteen days, some thirty, et cetera. It's very demanding upon them, so, um, and that's across the board with all of our employees. I I would ask if the board would consider, not tonight, but at the next session, providing that two thousand dollar per employee retention incentive. Many other school districts have done this, and I would add that I'd like to have, if you all approve this, two caveats to it. One is that it would not be provided until probably June. Um, again, that gives us enough time that, one, to process it, still counts towards our fiscal year numbers, as well, we know if somebody's going to leave by that time. And then also that employees will be notified that if this is approved, if they do decide to leave, there's a five hundred dollar contract fee anyway if they leave, um, but that this two thousand dollars would be recouped as well.
So this CARES Act money?
CARES Act money, federal money. That is allowable and is already approved by the DOE.
So how how much are we looking at?
Almost four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars.
And it's everybody?
It's everybody.
And that includes the FICA that we have to pay?
Yeah. She did all the calculations on it, and again, it is, it was submitted and is approved in our financial reports right now through the DOE, the budget.
And this is every employee, bus driver?
Everybody that's on staff right now.
If they stay with us?
Yeah.
Any other questions on that? I know we've talked about it individually and and at other moments.
Dr. Pulis, does this include or exclude the original CARE money that we got for pre-K kindergarten?
Pre-K would get their own money for that, so pre-K is not going to get six thousand dollars. They would get the two thousand that the pre-K allocates.
They already have that, right?
They do not have it yet.
Okay, I missed the six thousand dollars.
It it, the governor may very well be giving out money as well in this summer. All right, any other questions? All right, so, um, the next item on here is policy GAMC. We've had it out there for almost thirty days, and again, I'd ask if we would consider approving that at our next business meeting. Um, and that's just the policy says if if an employee, all classified and certified, if something happens where they end up getting arrested, um, that it is a, you know, something that they get. It's not your non-fingerprinted items, but it's it's items that include DOIs or anything else that you have to report it to the employer. Again, it's not, it's not to take necessary immediate action on anything, but it's to make us aware so that we can make decisions on it. Any questions on that policy? Madam Chair, I do have information to present in executive session for personnel. Goal Area Five, community engagement. Mr. McNair, can you give us a brief update on mental health?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for having me, and I just wanted to give you guys an update. I had a stakeholders meeting last Thursday. I had parents, teachers, administrators come in and wanted to talk a little bit about our um, mental health issues and concerns that we have here in the district. We had Dr. Kavanaugh Chandler from Coastal Community Health Services come out, and Dr. Pulis has had an opportunity to meet with him also, but we're looking at possibly opening up a community health service center here in Darien, and we're looking possibly at the the middle school location. Um, so right now, um, he's talking about the services that they're having, and these will be provided to the community in addition to being able to provide services to our schools. So, uh, it's a lot more involved. He's taking a whole child approach like the state is when it comes to education, and so he just wants to be a part of the community from the standpoint of being a resource. Wanted to thank you, Ms. McDonald, for being at at the, at that stakeholders meeting also. Had a lot of good feedback. You missed all the good stuff after you left, though. We appreciate you being there to say that.
I went five minutes, five for five.
I know, but that's when it clocked in.
Five minutes, all that happened?
Yeah, we have a lot clocked in, but yeah, there was, it was a good meeting, a lot of good feedback. We also had Ms. Futch here, Lisa Futch, who actually has a little practice called Behavior Matters. And what was a little startling to all of us is when she had talked about having about twenty-five clients that she's currently seeing, and about twenty of them are our students, K through twelve. And most of the issues that she's dealing with right now, working with the parents and the students, is suicidal ideations and trauma. So a lot of the kids that she's working with, we got them as young as first grade all the way up to seniors. And, uh, like I said, she has twenty-five clients that she's currently seeing, and about twenty of them are are students. Got feedback from the teachers. One of the things that they talked about, their concern with the pandemic and all the things happening in the building, is just student apathy. Really don't care about the grades, don't care about the effort. We went through that period of time where students were just given some work in the packets that we were given, and they were just really trying to just get through things. And so that behavior has kind of carried over into where we are now, where the expectations have increased, and we're saying you need to bring in the work, and they're like, well, I'm gonna pass anyway. So that concerns our teachers. Attendance concerns with the COVID, there have been kids that were out that come back in. They say they have, they have the COVID, the family calls in, say they have COVID. So we take all the mitigation of precautions as far as making sure that they're well before we let them back in, but they miss a lot of work. And so that was a big, uh, concern with the teachers. Uh, the principals, uh, their feedback was more about resilience. The fact that we got kids, we got about half of our kids, when things are happening to them, they just, you know, go right past it and continue on. Then we have about another half or so that when things happening, the behaviors where they're melting down and having more behavior issues are occurring in the schools. And so, uh, principals talk about more resilience training that's needed in our schools to help our students become, uh, more effective in how they deal with things. Um, and then the family, uh, parents' feedback was mostly about family support, lack of resources in the in the community. So I've asked the board, not the board, our stakeholders from the previous meeting to come back. Again, we're going to have multiple meetings where we're presenting new information and putting together our plan, so when we move forward, we'll have something in place to address all the concerns that our parents, our teachers, and everyone is having with everything. So this is going to be a continued, uh, participation. Love to have you board members here. I'm going to probably have it about four o'clock, so you have to leave a little early one day. But again, we just are in that process, and we're looking forward to putting our plan together and then being able to present it to you guys, okay? Any questions for me? And I'll just give you a hard time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Um, item number two under Goal Area Five has to do with a MOU to allow Boys and Girls Club to use portions of the Oak Grove. And I've explained that right now, our band program's growing in middle school, and the Boys and Girls Club occupies a room at, um, the middle school already, and if you look at the map that's here, you'll see, okay? You'll see at the very upper right-hand corner, they use a portion of that right now, and you know, their numbers are growing. And so with the band growing, they want to be able to use both parts of that as well. And then we have Oak Grove that's at the bottom, and originally, as we talked about, that we would demolish the whole entire area once we move into the new kitchen. What we'd like to do is remodel the portions that you see where it says remodel, where that line is, and demolish everything from that line to the left. Uh, what Mr. McNair was just referencing, if you look to the GR for, uh, Oak Grove and go up, that's a hallway entrance. The the rooms to the left, that's one of the things that, um, Dr. Chandler mentioned, that, you know, if he's, if we were to allow a nonprofit to come in, that he could make a clinic out of that. Again, this building right now is, it's not utilized, that portion of it. And that would be a very good thing for the community possibly, but we can't spend any money on it. Um, we're not going to spend the money on the remodel if the Boys and Girls Club moves over here either. They are, have already, um, provided the opportunity to pay up to fifty thousand dollars to paint it, with an additional possibility from some other heavy grant people that we'll know here very near future to provide a lot more money to furnish it and do things of that nature. Uh, as it stands right now, that's a very good potential for us to move them, grow it. It's a great community service. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club have done a tremendous amount for this school district and for this community since they've been here for just over a year now. Uh, and they're growing, they're growing and growing. So any questions at all about something that we'd like to start looking at doing, um, with Oak Grove? Obviously, like I said, the demolition area would open up the green space, which was the original Oglethorpe Square, and the portion that we would potentially keep is it really only cutting off access to about one classroom on that side, and then still allowing areas for the pavilion and everything else that's there.
Um, this, um, the clinic, and it would be open to the public?
It would if we decided to do it. And I'm just throwing out, that's one example of what possibly could be used. We have made zero commitments on that, Mr. Hewlett. Uh, he just came to look at it.
Right.
To see what it would take, and he already, they already have, and it's it's a nonprofit federally funded, majority of it's federally funded. Uh, they have a clinic in Townsend, I believe, one out at Shellman, and they're just trying to draw one more here. Um, that's a, that's a, a space that could be provided, and it really brings together, if we end up with what we'd like to see in that particular area, a community-based approach to providing things for for everyone.
And the staff that would be in there, Dr. Pulis, they would be able to rotate within our schools also. So we'll have that facility staff several days a week, but the staff people in there would be available at our schools. Uh, psychiatric nurses, licensed clinical social workers, and health staff people at our schools also.
Would the clinic per se part be open during the day? And my concern would be, um, people off the street near our students at the school, unless it's fenced off or some area like that. That would be my concern, is the access to our students.
Right.
You know, keeping our students safe.
And and we would design it in that manner, if if we do it, okay? But if we did it, it would still, right now, it is blocked off. Um, in order to get in, you'd have to go a certain way, but that could be done very easily. All right, the last item is a request from the Girl Scouts, again, for their summer trip. Uh, this is basically an annual request, and that they would reimburse the system at cost. That cost is around six hundred, six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, you'll see that in the back, and they're just asking us to, um, to approve their use of the bus, and if you would read through that when you can, and then Monday night, if you would consider approving that request.
And this is the same they use every summer?
Same thing they do every summer, just move. I don't have anything else on the agenda. I do have personnel.
Okay, no legal?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, we will return shortly. We're ready. The McIntosh County Board of Education adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Mr. Hewlett, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Struggles, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. Board comments?
I'll go first. Um, all I have is, I just want to congratulate our, uh, our star student, Bailey Middleton, uh, and our star teacher, Ms. Nix, uh, at MCA. Um, you know, job well done by both of these ladies. Congratulations.
I'll echo those congratulations to our star student and teacher, and also would like to reiterate our appreciation on behalf of the school board to the city of Darien and the the work that was done to help clear the the debris at the middle school. That that was a big project.
Huge, thank you.
It just represents the the support that we have from throughout the community. We appreciate it.
Everybody keep up the good work, and congratulations, Bailey and Ms. Nix. Thank you.
Likewise, congratulations, and also just to say to our, um, teachers and the staff, thank you. Um, we know you are working through some challenging times, and we just want to say thank you for what you do and keep up the good work.
Stay free from COVID, things are going great. Appreciate the hard work of our staff and faculty out there, and just appreciate the support of the board.
Did you have anything?
Just congratulations to Bailey. You're a fine young lady, and this is an accomplishment you'll remember the rest of your life.
Okay. Again, congratulations Bailey and Ms. Nix. Have a good evening.